Counselor.
Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present this resolution. I'm proposing that the city change the structure of the sign department. I really think that the sign department should be a standalone division within the DPW and not a subdivision of the highway department. Reason being is it is a public safety department, Mr. President, and they need to ensure that there is proper installation and maintenance of our roadway control signs as well as the striping on our streets. If anybody's been paying attention to the last five or six meetings of the Medford City Council, I think it's safe to say that the topic of our conversation has been signage and has been the striping of our streets and the public safety issues that are surrounding those matters here in our community, Mr. President. And I'm asking that the administration take a look at this issue and determine whether or not it's feasible to create a standalone sign shop. The sign shop is responsible for all of the signage that's put forth by the traffic commission as well as the existing signs that are in place. They're in charge of all the signage at the schools as well, Mr. President. So it's quite a large job and what's happening is these individuals that are assigned to the sign shop, being a subdivision of the highway division, are being pulled away to handle other matters that are in the community and then they're put back into the sign shop, pulled out of the sign shop, put back in the sign shop. And I think that it would make good sense to have a full-time standalone sign and striping division within the DPW, Mr. President, so that these issues in our community can be addressed promptly and properly. I don't think we have had a meeting yet when the good weather rolls around that we don't talk about when our sidewalks are going to be, our crosswalks are going to be striped, Mr. President. And I think that this would be a perfect remedy for that type of issue. I'd ask that my council colleagues support the measure.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion of approval by Counselor Knight, citizen wishes to speak. Good evening, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Penta, former member of this council. When I was reviewing the offering by Counselor Knight this evening, my question, I think, presents itself in a different direction. I mean, we've spent over fourteen and a half million dollars for a brand-new building. It's obvious that certain departments are understaffed. And this may be a good way to look at actually what is going on in the highway department as it relates to men, the equipment that they have, and everything that's going on. And the fact that if this is going to be, I think, is your intent to create another department? Is that what you said, Counselor Knight?
A standalone.
A standalone. And I don't know if that's a contractual obligation that has to be negotiated through the union. I mean, it presents itself with a whole bunch of issues, but the best part of the issue, I think, is this, that I think the council really needs to take a look and see as to what's going on over there, the highway department, or the public works building. I mean, I don't really know if you have a director or not. He was on a three-month-on-trial basis. It ended in March. I don't know if they're still advertising for a new director's position, but I think it would be beneficial if he was here tonight to discuss the matter as well.
Point of information, Counselor Knight.
The commissioner has been appointed and is no longer wearing the interim tag, as far as I've been informed.
Is that public knowledge that he's been? I mean, are you councils aware of the fact that he's been appointed? Pardon me? Well, this is the problem of not getting information out there. I mean, some councils know, some don't. I, as a public person, don't know, and I try to stay on top of what's going on here in the city. But more importantly, just getting back to this issue in particular, my suggestion would be, and if I was on your side of the rail, I would suggest, that if we're going to be looking at this, maybe we should be looking at all the departments. And if this, in fact, is a union-type of job and this is contractual, I believe the membership themselves have to vote on this as well. So while it sounds good, I just think it needs to be researched, and I think it's the best time to look at the whole offering in the Department of Public Works.
Thank you very much, citizen.
You're welcome.
Chair recognizes Vice President Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Del Russo. Just on that point, if we could just request from the mayor's office written notification if the interim director has been appointed as the full-time director, because I was unaware. So I know, I believe the council's word, but if we could just get a report from the mayor's office to clarify that.
On the motion of approval as amended by Vice President Longo Kern, chair recognizes Counselor Knight again.
Again, Mr. President, this is a resolution that asks that the administration examine the feasibility thereof. So there will certainly be issues that are going to surround this matter in terms of collective bargaining, contract negotiation, and whether or not it even is a feasible move or an option to make. And that's why I'm asking the administration to study.
Thank you for that clarification. Chair recognizes the person at the podium. Welcome. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jean Martin, 10 Cummings Street. Thank you very much for listening. My question is, why would they be being pulled away? And it is a public safety issue. All DPW issues are a public safety issue, whether it's snow removal, whether it's trash removal, whether it's manhole covers, whether it's those rain drain things. If they're not set right, somebody can get into a car or an accident or something like that. So the DPW is definitely interwoven with public safety. There is absolutely no question about it, that if you can't drive down the street safely, then it's a public safety issue. And it has to do with that whole overview that I stated and I implore the mayor to look at. The whole city needs to be evaluated for traffic flow, sidewalks, bicycles, buses, trucks, the whole nine yards, everything, including striping. And I think that striping, and I agree with Mr. Knight, that it's absolutely, it's absolutely a basic function of the city, that we have proper striping, proper signs, so that everybody knows where they're going. But I wonder, the question that comes to my mind is, why are they being pulled away from the sign department in the first place? And that's because we are understaffed. So we need to look at that. But we can't look at staffing until we understand and assess the entire city. You have to look at it from the entire city's perspective. If you don't assess the whole city and all of its needs, then you're just, you know, playing a little game, patch here and patch here. And why are they being pulled away? So they're going to be pulled away, and then some other part of DPW is going to go unresolved. So, you know, so we have to look at it. So I think it's a great idea, and I absolutely urge the city to hire more workers, especially for sections in the city, the squares. They can be the eyes and ears for the police in Haynes Square, Medford Square, all the squares, South Medford. We can have section people all over the place cleaning them up and keeping them up, even if it's only Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So you have to look at it from a whole perspective. And I think that that's, you know, I asked the mayor to look at it from a whole perspective. And if they get pulled away, then there's going to be a hole someplace else. There's going to be a lack someplace else. So putting them in their own division helps the signage, but it's going to cause a problem someplace else. So thank you.
Thank you very much. On the motion for approval by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Caviello, as amended by Vice President Longo Kern, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Sixteen dash seven thirty-one, offered by Counselor Knight. Be resolved. The Medford City Council congratulate. Medford High School, Mustang, Hall of Fame, class of two thousand sixteen inductees. David Richard, class of two thousand one, football, indoor track, outdoor track. Megan Richard, class of two thousand five, soccer, basketball, softball. Paul Cavallaro, class of two thousand six, soccer, indoor track, outdoor track. Colin Tracy, class of two thousand seven, hockey and lacrosse. Bridget Souza, class of two thousand seven, volleyball, basketball, softball. Aranthah King, class of two thousand and seven, soccer, indoor track, outdoor track. Kayla Shere, class of two thousand eight, basketball, volleyball, outdoor track. Philip Gashback, class of two thousand nine, cross-country, indoor track, outdoor track. Gregory Wilson, class of two thousand ten, hockey and baseball, to be inducted as a coach. Lou Ruggiero, coach of cross-country, to be inducted for community service. Martin Murphy, Jr., class of two thousand seventy. Alfred Luongo, community service. And Andrew Pallotta, class of seventy-nine, nineteen seventy-nine, community service. The two thousand sixteen induction ceremony banquet will be held on Sunday, November twentieth, two thousand sixteen, at the Irish American Hall in Malden.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I'd like the council to join me in congratulating these individuals for the fine legacy that they've left behind them at Medford High School, Mr. President. And going through this list, we see a number of great student athletes who have the blue and white running through their veins, who have done well in the classroom as well as on the athletic field, Mr. President. And as we go down the list, there is someone who I'd like to point out, and that's Martin Murphy, Jr. Martin Murphy, for as long as I can remember, has been one of the most generous and giving individuals in our community, whether it's for Community Day, for banquets, so on and so forth. Marty Murphy and his father before him were always very, very generous in the community, very charitable, and a very philanthropist, a very great philanthropist, Mr. President. So with that being said, I move for approval.
On the motion for approval, chair recognizes Vice President Longo Kern.
I was going to second the motion. I know a number of the inductees, and they are great athletes, Megan Richard, David Richard. And I also was coached by Lou Ruggiero with cross-country, and he is an amazing guy. Still keep in touch with him today. One of my two favorite coaches next to Mr. Scott Pelley. So just wanted to congratulate all the inductees, the Murphy family, and it'll be a great day, I'm sure, on November twentieth.
On the motion for approval by Counselor Knight, seconded by Vice President Longo Kern, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries petitions, presentations of similar matters. Sixteen dash seven thirty-two, petition for common visual license by Michelle Lawler. Four thirty, Salem Street, Medford, Mass. for RMG Donuts LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, two seventy-eight Middlesex Avenue. On file are all the necessary certificates and grits of compliance. Is the petitioner present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Michelle Lawler, five Rose Lane, Bauxford, Mass.
Welcome. Chair recognizes Vice Counsel Law, Caviello, Chairman of the Licensing Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have reviewed the paperwork for this, and they appear to be in order, and this is going to be inside of the BJ's store, correct?
Yes, it has, yes.
I assume it's in one of the other stores already, so good luck. And talk about a family who's been more than generous to the city. The Lawler and the Lawler family have been there for everybody in this community, no matter what goes on. They're the first to step up. They sponsor the Veterans' Day here, the lunch for the veterans. So again, a motion for approval, Mr. President.
On the motion for approval, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley. Counselor Max.
This has nothing to do with the petitioner, but more to do with BJ's. And you may or may not be aware, but BJ's has been a good neighbor for a number of years in that particular neighborhood. And of recent, I've received a number of calls from area residents regarding the trash on the property at BJ's and how it is sneaking under the fence into surrounding neighborhoods. And I would just ask, as part of this paper, that we, as a council, send a paper to BJ's asking that they maintain the trash on both sides of the fence at BJ's and that they stay vigilant regarding that very important neighborhood concern.
Regular maintenance of any debris on their property. That's added to the paper. So on the motion of approval, Counsel Caviello, seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? License is granted. Good brewing.
Thank you.
Sixteen dash seven thirty-three, communication from the mayor to the Honorable President and members of Medford City Council, City Hall, Medford, Mass. oh, two one five five. Dear Mr. President and City Councilors, whereas the Honorable City Council voted to appropriate certified free cash, one million and two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of awarding the contract to the lowest qualified bidder for the city hall roof, parapet, and dome, whereas this office informed you that when a loan order for the same purpose, Paper sixteen seven, six seventy-four, parenthetically, was approved via three readings, that the free cash appropriation would be rescinded, whereas the third reading was taken on October eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, that would be last week. Therefore, I respectfully request that the original vote from free cash, Paper sixteen dash six seventy-six, be rescinded. Sincerely yours, signature on file, Stephanie M. Burke, Mayor. Chair awaits motion. We spoke about this last week when we approved the papers.
Motion for approval, Mr. President.
On the motion for approval by Counsel Caviello, seconded by Counselor Knight, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. There was no real call recorded. Madam?
While we're under suspension.
We're not under suspension. Motion for suspension, Madam Vice President? On the motion of Vice President Longo Kern for suspension of the rules, for what purpose, Madam?
To request...
Thank you, President Del Russo. I thought we were under suspension. The agenda's pretty much done. With regards to the meeting we have tomorrow night, I know there's some changes that have been proposed from the Rules Committee, and I, as well as the public, have got a few calls and emails on this. It's pretty lengthy, the copy that we got in our Friday's packet, and I don't see the actual changes highlighted anywhere. I know I've noticed a few myself after reviewing the documents. So I just wanted to ask before tomorrow night's meeting if we could get the actual proposed changes highlighted on a version so that we can make sure we're not missing any of the important changes that are being proposed tomorrow night. So I just would like to ask that in a motion form. I think it's important, and I know a lot of people are interested in these changes. And even for myself, it was hard. While, when I was reading it, I noticed a number, especially, a number of changes, especially in section ten and ten point two, ten point three, but I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. So it was a little difficult for me to review it, never mind the public who, you know, doesn't pre, isn't here every Tuesday night.
On that motion, Vice Counselor Adam Knight, who is the chairman of the Rules Committee.
Mr. President, the subcommittee membership will be prepared to make a presentation tomorrow, and we will go over the changes word by word and compare and contrast them with the current and existing rules. So there will be nothing left out tomorrow at the meeting. We will be absolutely one hundred percent sure to go over every single word, period, comma, so on and so forth, so that everybody is well aware of what's going on.
Hence the purpose of the meeting, Counselor.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. Point of information, Mr. President. What is the information you have to share with us, Counselor?
I'm going to share it right now. I agree with Counsel Longo Kern. I think it would be helpful to have that in advance of the meeting, so then I can go over it myself and come up with some, you know, questions that I may have. So I thank the gentleman, Counselor Knight, for all the due diligence on that committee. They've done a lot of work. But in order for me to make an educated decision, I'd like to have ample time to review it ahead of time rather than right at that meeting. It would be helpful to have a comparison. You know, this rule number one, we're adding the word "the" and changing it to, you know, and it is difficult to follow. So...
That's, Mr. President, that's why when the committee reported this paper out on August first, two thousand and sixteen, we asked that the city clerk put the committee report together and gave it to the council probably five, six weeks in advance. But, you know, we'll do the best we can with what we've got to get it together. I can't make any promises that it's going to happen, Mr. President, but the council also doesn't have to take a vote on it tomorrow if they have any questions or concerns. So we have the meeting. The meeting's been duly called and advertised. I think that the meeting should go forward, Mr. President. If individuals that have questions raise them, we will answer them and do our best to answer them. And if it's not appropriate to call for a vote or there are further changes that need to be deliberated in subcommittee, which I anticipate would be the case, Mr. President, this was a more or less reform measure that would start a discussion. And I don't think that any of us on the subcommittee felt as though this was going to be a final product that came out of the committee as a whole, and we felt as though this is probably something that we're going to have to take a look at a couple of other things before it went forward and became operational, if in fact that was the will of the council as a whole, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. While we're under suspension, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. Jean Martin, 10 Cummings Street. And thank you very much for bringing this up, because I think that the one thing that I'm concerned about with any rule changes, and I will be at that meeting, and I encourage all to be at that meeting for Medford, because that could change the way that this body makes votes, does decisions. This is huge. This is the way our government is run. This is the basic core of how our government makes the decision-making process for the city. So what you do in this Rules Committee affects the entire city and how we do business, which is huge. Secondly, our First Amendment right, I just, I just want to remind everybody that this is the one chance that people get. And I remember being in some heated, heated discussions in the city council hall right here, this chamber, back in the days of Mr. Mayorko and everything, and, you know, back in the old days. And as heated as they got, it was cathartic, and it was helpful to hear from the public. And the one thing that I don't want to see is any kind of rule change that might alter the public's ability to have participation in the process. So I just want to make that perfectly clear. And I will be at the meeting tomorrow night. Thank you.
Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, this is something that didn't happen overnight. And this Rules Committee started meeting before I was a member of the council and then continued to meet when I became a counselor, and then continued to meet after the composition of the subcommittee changed. When Counselor Camuso retired from public life and when you became the president, the composition of the subcommittee changed as well. So this is something that started well before I was the chairman. It went through my first term and was deliberated and discussed, and it's been going on for the past year. We've probably met, oh, I think, between the committee right now, we've met seven or six times on these proposed rules. Prior to that, when Counselor Del Russo and Camuso comprised the committee, I think we met another six times. So there's been at least twelve public meetings on the subject and topic of rules, and the Medford City Council rules to date, Mr. President, that I can recall since I've been on this council. And this proposal is the fruit of that labor.
Thank you. Welcome. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Penta, Zero Summit Road, Medford, Mass. I'm a member of the cycle's body. You know, one of the things that I think is a concerning point is, while the meeting might be held tomorrow night, it's not really being held where the public can actually see it and view it. There are a lot of people who might like to come and just can't do it. That's number one. We don't have any public access, so that's, that's another two points against us. But more importantly, I think some of these proposed changes and discussions that take place stand to be corrected go back to two thousand and four and then two thousand and eight. And for them to be sitting in the committee for a long period of time such as that with no, no intent to either add or subtract them or eliminate them, and they're being brought up now, you know, is of a question. You have some concerns in here relative toward open public forums and public participation. And if you read it the way it's being written, unless the words are going to be changed, someone's going to have to come at six o'clock at night if they want to talk on the subject matter before the council, and then if they want to talk...
Point of clarification, Mr. President, and this is why I'd rather not have this conversation now, because the paper still hasn't been presented. It hasn't even been, it hasn't even been adopted by the council.
Point of clarification, Counselor Knight.
It's, it hasn't been adopted by the council. It's still in subcommittee. The subcommittee reported a paper out. We're going to have a meeting on this tomorrow. There are going to be lots of questions. That's what the meeting tomorrow's for, Mr. President.
Right, and that's why we're going to discuss this all tomorrow.
But, Mr. President, with all due respect, if this is the report that came out, an eight-page report, okay, and it's Counsel Longo Kern, it's Counsel Max's, it would have been nice to have it highlighted, it did take some time to go review it, then why not discuss this right now? What's being, what's wrong with, we're talking about highlights, that's all we're talking about.
Point of information, Mr. President.
And these are important points for people to maybe want to come tomorrow night and understand what's going on.
Mr. President, pursuant to the present counsel...
Counselor, I'm going to clarify this. This was reported out of subcommittee to the council with the paper that we came in our packets on Friday. And then we've just called for the council meeting and announced it in the announcements that went out on Friday. So the matter was reported out of subcommittee to the council floor. The council voted to send it to committee of the whole for vote some months ago, I believe, and we have the committee meeting coming up, which will be held tomorrow, which is where we will begin the discussions of the matter.
But I believe, Mr. President, this was, came out of committee in August, this is now October, so there is a few months lag in between, and now you're asking your honorable body to review this in a matter of a few days. Eight pages, very small, miniscule print, but that's not the point. The fact of the matter is, this involves the taxpayers of this community.
Point of order, Mr. President.
This is their forum.
Point of order, Counselor Knight.
Pursuant to the council rules, a paper that's in subcommittee cannot hit the council floor until a committee of the whole has met.
Thank you.
The committee of the whole has not met. The committee of the whole is scheduled to meet tomorrow.
We're going to discuss this paper tomorrow.
No, I don't, no, that's not true. I don't think it's committee of the whole. It's been referred to as committee of the whole. And since you're referring something to the committee of the whole, are you telling me that all seven of you are going to be afraid to discuss it before tomorrow night to let the taxpayers know some of the issues that are on the agenda, Mr. President, that they might want to come?
It's not on our agenda tonight, sir.
It's on your agenda for tomorrow night.
It's, it's a committee of the whole. If it doesn't even get out of the committee of the whole, it doesn't become operational, it doesn't even hit the floor, it doesn't, doesn't become operational, it's often not. All this is a proposal.
That's the, that's the issue, that's the issue at point, Mr. President. There are some very salient points here that operate against the taxpayer coming to this podium when they would like to speak on a subject matter more than once. Also, suspension of the rules as an issue more than once. And we can go through this, if you want to, page by page. That's not my intent. My intent is to talk about some highlights that directly affect any taxpayer in this audience to come up here and have an opportunity to speak like right now, which a new rules is promulgated, they will not, if it's voted upon by this body, you won't be able to do it. You have to send...
That's not true, Mr. President.
Thank you.
That's not true.
I understand. We're getting ahead of ourselves here, counselors, and, sir, again, so I'd like you to wrap up your remarks now so we can move on with business.
Well, my remarks that I would like to wrap up, Mr. President, is the fact that on tomorrow night, you're going to be discussing things that are going to restrict council, I mean, citizen participation at this podium on more than one occasion. It's on three deliberate, if the council so votes. There's going to be three opportunities where citizens will not be able to do what's taking place here right now, coming up and speaking on something, whether it's on the agenda or suspension of the rules. And then the craziness of saying...
Point of clarification, Mr. President.
Then the craziness of saying...
That is not true.
Can I wrap it up, please? And the craziness of saying that if one council chastises another one, he has to be scolded by whoever the president is and apologize, and he won't be able to speak until the apology takes place. What are we talking about here? This is child's play.
This is going to be discussed in the committee of the whole, sir.
Well, I mean, well, these are part of the rules that are being promulgated.
Thank you very much.
It's ridiculous.
And thank you for your presence here tonight. Thank you very much. Yes.
The one thing I was asked, actually by phone and by email today, was if I can get a resident a copy of what the proposed rule changes are. And because I don't have it electronically, it's difficult for me to relay six pages of changes. So is there any way we can get this electronically so we can get it out to our constituency?
I believe all our documents that we get are also posted on the city's webpage.
Is this posted on the city webpage?
Is it, Mr. Clark?
The council rules, are they existing?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the meeting notice.
The meeting notice.
And it was also, it was attached to the meeting notice, but it was also attached to a previous council agenda when the subcommittee reported the matter out favorably and requested a committee of the whole.
Right.
It's been attached to the council agenda, the council agenda once, maybe twice, and it's been attached to the meeting notice now as well. So I believe it is electronically available online.
Where?
The city of Medford website.
I couldn't find it. Unless someone else is aware, where is the attachment placed on the... If you could give me a heads up where it is, because just so I can point people in the right direction.
The, when it was reported out of committee, and I don't have that particular date, onto the floor, right, that entire committee report was posted on the records that one of your councils approved. So the entire thing is part of the committee report that are on the records, the entire of that committee report.
Right, and where would you find those records on the city website?
The council records.
So the council records, and we don't know what...
Yeah, so, you know, and I can't tell you what date that was, you know, of him.
Can you find out and send us an email just so I can point people?
I think it's the first meeting in September, Mr. President. It's going to be September 20th, I think.
So if they're posted, yeah, but we can, we can, I believe I might, do I have, I think I do have that, you know, on my files, my own files, you know, the committee report itself, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, just one quick follow-up. Madam Vice President?
I'm just going to respectfully ask that before we meet on this, and it's only going to, I truly appreciate the amount of time spent by the committee members and I agree that rules need to be reviewed, but with such a controversial issue at this point, I mean, this came out on Friday and we've-
It didn't come out on Friday.
Well, we got, we got these proposed changes in our packet on Friday.
We received them in the summer.
If we received it in the summer, the public didn't know about it. I didn't read it until this weekend and I can't tell the public there are five changes versus 20 changes. And for us not to be able to highlight the changes to the public and to even ourselves, I just think that's something that needs to be done before we sit and meet on it because if we're bombarded with, I don't know how many changes there are. If there are 25 changes, I mean, that's going to be a lot to go over tomorrow night. And I know you need a majority vote, but it might be only one or two that are hesitant and have continuous concerns. And I just think it's a little fast to push it, you know, expedite it when we have, you know, we do have the public kind of concerned about it.
Councillor Knight, if you want to clarify that.
I do believe the meeting is a public meeting, open to the public tomorrow.
It is.
Anybody that has a concern is more than welcome to come.
Thank you.
They'll have an opportunity to be heard at that meeting, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Like I said, you know, it's, I don't think it's very difficult. When the paper was first reported out, I believe I explained to the councillors because it is a lengthy document, if you look at it and you'll see Article 1.1, the swearing in and the oath of office, and then there's a number right next to that. That reflects the rule that's in the current rules that are adopted. And I made that point silently clear when the paper was reported out of committee. Now, the paper was reported out of committee some four, five, six weeks ago on this council floor. Nobody's looked at it since then. That's not my problem. I'm sorry about that, if they haven't looked at it, Mr. President, but this committee met for three and a half years on this topic and we're ready to move forward on the matter and present it to the councillors, present it to the committee of the whole.
The meeting has been called and we'll begin our deliberations tomorrow night.
In the interim, I'd be happy to work towards putting a document like that together, but I don't feel as though it's something that should hold up the progress of the committee.
Thank you.
Just a quick point of clarification, it's not on the city's website. And for the folks to have found out today, it was a citizen taxpayer who put it on a Facebook page and that's how people became aware of it because they couldn't get the gut of what this whole thing was about on the city's webpage.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Betty Lowe, 34 Gibson Street. This is only my second time approaching the council. The first time was a couple of months ago, earlier this year, when I came up to speak about the development, the proposed development at 61 Locust Street. And I've had a chance to review these rules. Again, it was through, not the city's website, but through a concerned citizen on Facebook posting this document, the meeting report from August 1st. And I've had a chance to review it and I, I've come to the conclusion that if I, if these rules had been in place when I first came up, when I first approached the council, I would not have been able to speak on the topic of about 61 Locust Street and my position of the development. Rule 10 in particular about open forum and public participation in conjunction with Rule 4.2, papers requiring action, it would seem to require any citizen who would approach the council during public participation to have to file an application with the city clerk the week prior, either Friday or Thursday, depending on whether there's a holiday, by fourth, by, what time is it? By, by 9:30 a.m. the Friday preceding the city council meeting. And the public participation period seems to be limited just to whatever's on the council's agenda for that week, which-
Point of clarification, councillor-
If you look at it, there's also an open forum section and an open forum section was established by way of the subcommittee to allow for residents of the general public to come up and speak before the council on items that do not appear on the agenda. And anyone wishing to do so may do so by application in accord with Rule 4.0, which is the way that everybody currently applies to speak before the city council.
Right.
And if you read the sentence further, it would say, "Or with the city messenger on the evening of the meeting prior to that portion of the meeting."
And we're going to have the opportunity in the meeting that was called for this purpose to begin, to begin the public deliberation of the proposed rules changes in the context of the meeting called for tomorrow night.
I have two questions pertaining to councillor Knight's points. The first one would be with regards to the open forum, is that going to be televised?
And if you would, direct them towards the chair according to the rules that exist.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Well, I would just like to know if the, that open forum, that's supposed to be taking place at 6:00 p.m. prior to the 7:00 p.m. roll call, to the, prior to the 7:00 p.m. start of the city council meeting, will that part be televised? Will that portion be televised?
Subject to the, subject to the will of the council.
Okay. And the other part I wanted to ask about was why is it that each member of the public gets to speak just once at each opportunity for members of the public to participate, at the open forum before the meeting, at the public participation section, time slot, and then at the open forum after adjournment? It would, these rules would seem pretty onerous between the, between the speaking once at each opportunity for public participation and between, and with having to file an application with the city clerk the week prior to speak at the public participation part of the city council meeting. These would seem to fly in the face of the stated goal where the city, the committee has drafted the proposal below that will reorganize the existing rules into a more coherent and fluid structure, streamline the meeting structure, increase opportunities for public participation and adopt best practices. It would seem to me to really put quite a burden on the public to figure out the rules pertaining to approaching the council during the public participation part of the meeting and being able to share our thoughts and opinions.
Your response to that, Mr. President? The parliamentarian for the council is the president of the council at that period, at that point in time. He's in charge of enforcing and implementing and applying the rules. Presently under the current rules that are in place right now, I believe they say that a citizen would be allowed to talk no more than three times for no more than 10 minutes. So this allows a person to speak still three times for up to three minutes, which actually increases participation because it gives you a full 30 minutes to speak as opposed to three times in 10 minutes, it gives you 30 minutes to speak.
Thank you.
10 minutes on any item that's on the agenda and 20 minutes on any items that aren't.
And again, we'll continue, we'll begin our deliberation on this tomorrow night in the committee of the whole.
Whether or not the rules are adhered to, the current rules are adhered to when the 310 rule is in, story, Mr. President.
Councillor Marks.
I think the woman at the podium raises some great questions and tomorrow will be a very fruitful meeting. However, I do agree that although councillor Knight mentioned that this will allow ample opportunity to speak, the way I understand it is, other than the 6:00 p.m. prior meeting, that you would have to speak on something that's offered by the council. And in the past, we have allowed residents to get up and speak on any issue. And that's always been the uniqueness of our body. Unlike the state legislature, unlike Congress, we invite public participation. And my discussion will be made tomorrow night, but I agree, I will not support anything that narrows any type of public participation or makes residents jump through hurdles in order to speak before this body, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor.
Yes, to councillor Marks-
If you just want to, uh-
Yes, to councillor Marks' point, I would not have been able to bring out my objections to the 61 Locust development had these rules been in place at that time that I first approached the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
During the public participation process, because you can talk about anything, free of interruption, that's not on the agenda, you'd be able to talk about anything you want before the meeting is, before the actual official business of the city council meeting takes place and after. And then if a councillor feels as though something is set at the podium during the public participation portion that warrants further investigation, that's great. We've heard it from a citizen, now we have a week to investigate it. We have a week to investigate it, we're going to go and look at this for a week. Okay, there's an issue over here. Let's make some phone calls, let's investigate it, let's see what's going on. Okay, this might be worthy of a resolution. You file a resolution, then next week the resolution's on.
Thank you, councillor.
Mr. President?
Councillor, we have a citizen at the podium-
Can I speak once or twice?
Thank you, councillor. Please do.
You know, it'd be nice to get equal time. You know, it's great to offer a public session prior to our meeting. We're opening it up at 6:00. We assume that people don't have families, we assume that people aren't working. We're taking a lot of assumptions here, that a 6:00 p.m. meeting, first of all, that's not televised and that, secondly, just say 20 people do want to come up and speak under this open meeting. The first person comes up and speaks on sidewalks. The second person comes up and speaks on the roof. The third person comes up and speaks on sidewalks. How are we going to keep a quorum, Mr. President? Because I'm not sure what order things will be taken if people are here. Are they just going to rattle off what their concerns are in fallen deaf ears? I mean, to me, what better to have someone from the public speak while the debate is happening? You know, I don't want someone speaking two hours before a debate because that's no good. I want to hear what they have to say during the debate, Mr. President. And I think we all should be eager to listen to residents that are taking the time to come up here out of their schedule. We always say, I wish more residents would come up and now we're making it more difficult for residents to come up and speak before this body. So that's the only point I want to make and I appreciate your allowing me, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, councillor, and we're going to wrap this all up and we're going to discuss this tomorrow night. Madam Vice President?
I just want to agree with councillor Marks. It almost makes me antsy not to know the exact proposed changes and I can't imagine not allowing the public to speak during every single issue. I mean, that's sometimes how we shape our votes. I mean, we have 100 people for the Locust Street development, we knew what the people wanted and what they were upset about. If we didn't have something like that, I think it would be just a terrible way to do business. I think a lot of the ways we do it now is the right way and letting the people speak and have their First Amendment right. And people respect that and people are scared enough to come in front of the podium, never mind having to be barred, you know, follow all these rules. So I have grave concern about that myself.
Why don't we wrap this all up now since we're really not discussing this matter tonight? And we're going to welcome the citizen to the podium who's going to share his name and address for the record.
Joe Villione, 59 Garfield, where a tree was saved today from destruction. Thank you very much, I'll be very brief. I have a date with Dr. Strange tomorrow night, so I can't attend. I'm sure you're happy about that, but if someone would like to borrow my camera, I think we need to get this on videotape, and I would just like to recite a paragraph said here in this very council chambers in 2008. "The one sentiment that I have heard, that I take great exception to, is that the city is trying to limit speech. The notion the city would censor or squelch free speech is baseless and as city solicitor I would find any such effort repugnant." According to the movie Transporter, city solicitor Rumley, now's your big chance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And councillors, I think the motion, what was your motion, Madam Vice President, that we have a colorized version of this?
Yeah, that the changes be highlighted.
That, on the motion that the changes be highlighted, all those in favor?
An electronic copy, if we can get, I know-
And an electronic copy is already available, but we'll add that as well, amend the motion.
The president's looking for it, they can't find it, so we should make it-
No, I'm saying that I can readily get that, it is fairly available, I can take it before the end of tonight, councillor.
Okay, thank you.
On that motion, all those in favor, all those opposed. Motion carries. While we're on to suspension, a couple of papers in the hands of the clerk. Offered by councillor Scarpelli, be resolved that the city council discuss the bus stop on High and Main Street. Councillor Scarpelli, where are you? Hold on. There you are. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can, I know that a few weeks back, we took a vote, we put a request into the Department of Transportation and we made a recommendation and requested that we eliminate the bus stop in front of High and Main Street until the construction on that side is complete. And from what I gather, I believe that the bus stop is still active, so if the city clerk can reach out to the Department of Transportation and, I know Dan Fielding worked directly with him to make them aware of our decision and go from there.
On that motion, all those in favor, all those opposed. Motion carries. Offered by councillor Mark, be resolved that the administration update the council on the poor lighting in Metford Square and surrounding squares. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is not new to the council, but I've received a number of complaints from not only area residents but business owners that now that the daylight savings time is here, that at 5:30 it gets quite dark and square is pitch dark. And it's becoming a problem, Mr. President. I know roughly about 12 to 14 months ago, the, many of the lenses were changed within the lighting fixtures with the hopes that that would improve some of the lighting in the square, that feel to yield any benefit, in my opinion. And there is a pilot program, if anyone's interested, that's being done in front of the old theater, Metford Theater on Salem Street. You'll notice that they enhanced the lights in two of the streetlights and in my opinion, they give off great light. And I'm hoping that we really don't need to spend much more time on this in the interest of public safety, in particular when we have trick or treat coming in our square very shortly and in Haynes Square and West Metford, that these lights be changed over immediately, Mr. President, in the interest of public safety. There are many sections in the square, if business owners didn't leave their lights on overnight, it would be ultimately dark in the square. And that's not good for business and it's not good for public safety. So I would ask for a response back from the mayor regarding when this new lighting is going to take place.
So that, if you could just clarify that, Mr. Clerk, that the new lighting solutions that were implemented by the Office of Energy and Environment be implemented immediately in the interest of public safety.
Right.
Councillor Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, not only in the squares, but all the streetlights that we have in our city, they're those large, orange, low voltage lights. I think it's time that we change over to the LED lights, like many other cities have on all our, all our main streets, at least, that orange light isn't cutting it anymore. But as in the squares, I've been to many of the squares in other cities and towns, they all have bright LED lighting on all their decorative posts, so I think those should be done immediately and I agree with councillor Marks. Halloween's coming up, there's going to be kids out and usually there's 8 to 10,000 kids that come out next week, so if we can get that done quickly, it'd be a great help.
So on the motion of councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Caviello and amended by councillor Caviello, councillor Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to mention really quick, since the issue of public safety came up, that the next Metford Police Community Meeting is coming up. It's at St. Francis Parish Center at 7:00 p.m. on November 2nd. Everyone is welcome, no matter what neighborhood you live in throughout the city, everyone is welcome to attend St. Francis Parish Center, 7:00 p.m. on November 2nd. December 7th, Andrews Middle School. January 4th, South Metford Fire Station. And we just added a date of February 1st is going to be up at, is going to be, I think, at Breed Hall of Petux University. So we added another date to the list, but I just wanted to, public safety came up and this is a great venue to talk about public safety issues and questions that the mayor have for the police station. So that is a list of updating, updated times and locations for those meetings.
Well, thank you very much. And on that motion as amended, all those in favor, all those opposed. Motion carries. Our last piece entered suspension offered by councillor Mark, be resolved that Riverside Avenue be discussed in the interest of public safety. Councillor Marks.
Mr. President, I typically don't like to bring up one street or another because I know many of our streets are in deplorable condition, but I must say Riverside Ave, in particular at the corner of Riverside and Park and going down Riverside towards the Felsway, there are a number of good-sized dips in the road and they're unavoidable. You can't swerve to one side or another and they really cause a public safety concern. And we've asked, I know I've put it on and other members of this council have put it on a number of times, some of it's due to work done by the utilities, but really the city needs to step up, find who dug these particular trenches and get them to repave the road in the condition it previously was. And I would ask once again, I know we received $400,000 in Safe Streets grant from the state, however, I don't think we can ignore the existing streets. It's great we have seven projects that are coming to fruition, but we can't ignore the existing streets. So I would ask that Riverside Ave be looked at again by our engineer.
And if I remember correctly, councillor, when we were discussing that whole interchange down by the Felsway and the plaza with the new restaurants that went in, I think it was our assumption, if not our explicit request, that that area be repaved before the grid, which they did paint in finally, was put into place to sort of allow for that grid to stand out so there'd be less gridlock and to smooth out that traffic area to make things work more efficiently. And unfortunately, it didn't happen and that grid was painted on what one could only describe as some sort of moon surface. So on the motion of councillor Marks, we invite the representative of East Metford to state his name and address for the record.
Thank you, councillor President. I want to thank councillor Marks for bringing up a safety concern on the streets at Park and Riverside Avenue. I've been meaning to say this for many decades and I've heard many people express concerns about the safety issue when they're driving a vehicle, also pedestrians, at that exact location. location. If you're on Park Street, coming from the north side, from the old Swan School, and you're entering onto Riverside Ave., you have to go left or right or straight. However, there is-- it seems like it's not a fair obstruction, that fence on the left-hand side, it's a white picket fence. Even if you're sitting in a high-rise vehicle versus, forget about it, if you're driving a Corvette, of course, it's hard to see over that fence. I'm sure everyone here is totally aware of the exact location. There's been numerous accidents without me checking the internet from the insurance companies and therefore. If we could sort of like do a surgical eminent domain on the top 18 inches, whatever it takes, on the fence, I would gladly put it out of my pocket to see less accidents, less injuries. Just let me know the number, I'll cut you the check.
Thank you. So on the motion of approval by Counselor Marks, Counselor?
Just if I could, actually, the next street down, and the street escapes, the name escapes me, there were some bushes that were eight to 10 feet tall. And our building department went out and kindly asked the owners to cut them down, because it was blocking the view of people trying to get onto Riverside. And the residents were kind enough to get out there immediately and trim the bushes down. I've never had something of a fixed structure like a fence, but I think it's something we should ask the building department. You don't happen to have a number, do you, of the home that you're talking about?
The others?
Yeah.
I go, I can edit easily.
So if we can get that, I think we should offer it for the building department, maybe just to go out there, take a look at the area, because that is a tough area to pull out of, let alone with an obstruction in the way, so.
On that motion as amended--
Can you provide that to the city clerk, the address?
Yes, sir.[1763.33]